Good evening. I'd like to call to order the February 26, 2019 Seminole County School Board meeting. And this evening, I'd like to introduce our phenomenal Principal of Castleberry Elementary School, Mallory Holliday, who will be introducing our student invoker.
Thank you for that introduction. So, good evening. My name is Mallory Holliday. I am the proud Panda Principal at Castleberry Elementary School. And I have the pleasure of introducing one of our fifth grade Pandas to you tonight, June Turner Sanders. June submitted an essay as part of the Rotary Club of Castleberry's Essay Contest and was selected as one of their winners. She read her essay aloud at their December meeting and truly inspired all of us in the crowd. Ms. Allman was there in attendance. And so she's here to read her essay to you tonight. She's very nervous, so be nice. And we hope you enjoy. Thank you.
Inspiration is telling someone that they can. Inspiring feels like you just discovered a new species of animal. Getting inspired feels like a rush of adrenaline. When you inspire, it feels as if you are comforting everyone around. A person who inspires you is someone who thinks you can. If I were to inspire someone here and now, that person would probably be very happy and go above and beyond. If someone were to inspire me, then I know I'd be very happy and, of course, go past my limits. Someone who inspires me is my dad, Jacob Mitchell Schwartz. He inspires me to write music, play piano, and write stories. A person who may inspire a different person other than me would likely be their own parents or someone who made history. Someone else who may inspire you is the Obamas. Barack Obama was the first black president of the United States of America. Another inspiring person is Martin Luther King Jr. He brought equality to America. When he brought equality, he brought us together. Martin gave happiness, and now everyone can do everything the same. Just think, if Martin didn't ever bring equality, then this world probably wouldn't be very good. There would probably be racial wars, and most kids would be a bit lonely. When my dad inspires me, he tells me that I can. He tells me when I'm right and he tells me when I'm wrong. When I make mistakes, my dad comforts me. He tells me how I can improve myself. That inspires me to go back, fix my mistake, and then keep going. When he inspires me, I feel a rush of creativity in my blood. I am happiest when he inspires me to do things that I never thought that I could. My mother, Jess Ann Schwartz, inspires me too. She inspires me to be me. She tells me that I am able to do things that I normally wouldn't. When she inspires me, she tells me that I am a great person. That makes me feel like I can do anything if I put my mind to it. When I put my mind to it, sure enough, I accomplish it. Some very inspiring quotes I've heard are, "All our dreams come true if we pursue them." "It does not matter how slow you go, as long as you don't stop." And "Everything you've wanted is on the other side of fear." These quotes inspire me because the first one inspires me to reach my goals; the second inspires me to go above and beyond while taking my time; and the third one inspires me to face my fears, to experience something amazing. In conclusion, inspiration is telling someone you can do more than the limit. When you are inspired, you feel good about yourself. When you inspire, you feel good about another person. As I conclude this essay, I would like to say that inspiration is an amazing thing that rushes through the world and through ourselves. We all love inspiration. Please stand and join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may now be seated.
And thank you. You've inspired us all. Let the record reflect that all school board members are here, other than Ms. Abby Sanchez, Superintendent and Legal Counsel. At this point in time, I'd like to acknowledge those who requested acknowledgement. Malavika Kanon, Sandra Maldonado-Ross representing SEA, Bobby Agonina representing SEA, Judy Ning representing SEA, Melissa Pugh representing Seminole County Council, PTA, Fiona Shannon representing Moms Demand Action, Debbie Smith representing Citizens Accountability Caucus. Thank you all for joining us here this evening. We appreciate it. Dr. Griffin, are there any agenda modifications, please?
Just one, Madam Chair. The addendum for good cause is marked on our electronic agenda by a green flag named Addendum Item.
Thank you. And Board members, are there any questions or items pulled for separate consideration?
None.
Okay. At this point in time, then, I'd like to ask for approval of the agenda outline.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimously approved. Dr. Griffin, we have some presentations this evening?
Yes, we do.
Good evening, Dr. Griffin, Board members. I direct your attention to the screen up here. If you'll take a look, that handsome young figure there is nobody other than our own Mr. Todd Sease, our Veteran of the Month. Mr. Sease joined the United States Air Force active duty in June 1985 and completed his basic training at Lackland Air Force Base in San Antonio, Texas, and technical training in Chanute Air Force Base in Rantoul, Illinois as a fabrication and parachute specialist. He was stationed in Dover, Delaware for the first half of his term and ended his active duty career in Homestead, Florida. During his enlistment, he had the opportunity to serve along some amazing people all over the United States, including the Philippines and various branches of the armed services, including the Royal Norwegian Air Force located in the town of Bodo, Norway. During his career with the Air Force, he worked on all types of lifesaving equipment found on most planes and worn by pilots. This included parachute rigging and packing, drogue chutes, cargo chutes, airplane emergency life rafts and slides, and life preservers. Interesting tidbit is that he also learned how to repair sewing machines and sat behind a sewing machine repairing parachutes and other types of fabrication work during the Air Force career. Not so sure I want my parachute sewed, but anyway. During the time in the Air Force, he attended college working towards a degree in accounting, eventually earning his undergraduate degree from Florida Southern College, Lakeland, Florida, and a master's degree in account and fiscal/financial management from Cal graduate school. Mr. Sease is currently the Director of Budgeting with the school district and was previously the Director of Finance before moving into his current role. While reflecting on his time in the Air Force, Mr. Sease believes it was a wonderful opportunity to grow, learn, and meet so many individuals that bonded together for a common cause. Mr. Sease's family was not able to join him here tonight, which currently reside in Claremont, Florida. Again, thank you for your service, Todd, and congratulations on being the Veteran of
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Griffin. Tonight, we are going to celebrate and recognize a young lady from one of our high schools. The Hispanic Heritage Foundation identifies, inspires, and prepares Latino leaders in the classroom community and in the workforce. Now entering its 20th year, the Youth Awards honors Latino high school seniors who excel in the classroom and in the community for their excellence in various categories, including business, community service, education, healthcare, technology, and engineering. Gold, silver, and Browns recipients are selected in each category and receive a one-time grant to fund their college education. Tonight, we recognize a beautiful young lady, a senior from Lake Brantley High School, Bianca Sanchez. Bianca, can you come up, please? Bianca Sanchez is a senior from Lake Brantley High School, and she was the 2018 Browns Award recipient for the education category. Bianca is a member of the Lake Brantley High School Air Force ROTC, marching band, concert band, Science National Honor Society, and National Honor Society. She's also taking dual enrollment courses at Seminole State College. She is also on the lacrosse team and volunteers at the Youth Without Borders program in Apopka. The award ceremony was held on December 6 at the Miami Day College. The Hispanic Heritage Award celebrated her achievements and honored her with the educational grant towards her college education. Bianca, congratulations. We are so proud of you. Tonight, she is joined by her mom. Here we have her mother, Maria Corales, and her sister, Alyssa Sanchez, and her principal, Dr. Danielle Trent. Well, right back there. Thank you.
Whatever you want, just whatever you want.
Dr. Griffin and Board members, thank you for the opportunity to recognize my team for their efforts on a recent event. As you're aware, last month, we worked with Seminole State College and the Orlando-Samford International Airport to put on Aviation and Aerospace Careers Day at the airport. And this is the second year of this event focusing on career pathways in this industry and all of the great high-demand, high-wage, high-skill jobs that are available. We had between 5,000 and 6,000 students and family members at the event that was open, K-12. And I think this is one of our best examples of partners coming together and making great opportunities happen for students. And as all of you know, this doesn't happen without a lot of deep planning work done by members of our team. So I want to take a moment to just recognize members of the project team from Seminole County Public Schools who were instrumental in making Aviation Day a success. And so we'll ask you all to come down and shake hands and be recognized. Our project managers for this event were Jill Fearly and Faith Whittingham, and members of their team, Griselle Figueroa, Carol Gamble, Jenna Guarito, Paula Hagan, Donna Lyons, Jean Taveras, and Dr. Nicola Williams. Thank you all so much for the time you invested in this event.
Dr. Griffin, do you have a recommendation for our consent agenda?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair. My recommendation is that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved unanimously. Student disciplinary hearing dispositions. Dr. Griffin, do you have a recommendation?
My recommendation is that the School Board of Seminole County approve the student disciplinary recommendations from January 28, 2019, February 4, 2019, and February 12, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved unanimously. It's now time for our public comment, so I'll ask Vice Chairman Allman if she could share our policies with everyone in attendance.
Thank you. The public input segment of the meeting is provided for the purpose of permitting persons to present specific matters to the Board for consideration and action, or referral to the Superintendent and his staff. The public input section of the meeting is not open to presentations of campaign issues by political candidates, matters involving student disciplinary actions, pending employee disciplinary matters, or pending litigation. Each individual member of the public is limited to three minutes. A designated group representative may have up to six minutes to speak. Thank you.
Great. And first is Ms. Malavika Kanon, and after her six minutes would be Sandra Maldonado-Ross.
a platform to speak tonight. I'd also like to shout out all the community members, press, and student activists who showed up, and Fox 35 News for amplifying our story. My name is Malavika Kanon, and I'm a senior in the IB program at Seminole High School. I've been attending SCPS schools since kindergarten, and now I'm representing March for Our Lives Orlando, a youth-led advocacy group that aims to reduce gun violence in our communities. One year after the Parkland shooting, we've been working to activate voters, mobilize youth, and pass legislation at the local, state, and national levels. So tonight, we're calling upon the five members of the Seminole County School Board to stand up for student safety by passing a mental health resolution that we've written based on our experiences as SCPS students. School safety is really not a monolithic issue, but we've noticed that time and again, leaders have failed to recognize the importance of mental health, real mental health with real students at the table making real decisions. Our current system has proved to be reactive rather than proactive and fails to incorporate the perspectives of vulnerable students, including low-income students, students of color, and LGBT students. Police officers and security in constant lockdowns are one thing, but we also need counselors. We need conversations. We need support systems. That's why our resolution aims to close the gaps between student needs and current SCPS mental health provisions while affirming the importance of youth as stakeholders in our community. So if this gets passed, this will be Seminole County's first resolution about mental health written for youth by youth. So my fellow activist, Nivea, just passed out copies of our resolution for all of you now. So if you take a look at it, we're calling for a couple of different things, but some of the highlights are that we want increased mandatory mental health first aid training for every faculty member. Yeah, for every faculty member and student focusing on things like suicide prevention, use of existing school resources, and de-stigmatizing mental health. We're also calling for the inclusion of individualized education plans in the future of mental health frameworks. And most importantly, we're asking for the establishment of a youth mental health advisory team of students from diverse backgrounds to review the framework each year and see how it can be improved for following years. All of these policies have one really important thing in common, and that's that they empower youth with the necessary knowledge to make decisions for ourselves regarding mental health, and they ensure that youth have a voice in the decision-making process, which isn't really something we've seen yet so far. So we are fighting for students' mental health first and foremost, but we are also fighting for youth to have a seat at the table when it comes to making decisions. So if you look around this room, you'll see that youth are really no longer silent. We're activists, leaders, future policymakers, and you'll notice that our voices are getting louder and louder. So that's why I'm asking Superintendent Walt Griffin to move rapidly to officially recommend this resolution during your legislative session. We really appreciate getting to meet with you yesterday and kind of hammer out the details of the resolution. We're confident that this can move forward. And we are also asking each of the school board members, once this resolution has been added to your agenda, to vote yes as soon as possible. And while we recognize that the process for passing resolutions can be slow and that can be cumbersome, we're asking that on this issue, you move as swiftly and decisively as possible because this is really not an issue we can afford to dawdle on. So we're calling upon you to pass this resolution well before the end of this school year so that it can go into effect for the following school year. And student activists will be checking regularly with you all to make sure that happens. So thank you so much for considering our proposal, and I'm looking forward to answering any questions if you guys have them.
Much for presenting.
You did a great job, don't you think?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, have a few comments, if that's okay?
Please.
We did meet yesterday, and I appreciate your preparedness and professionalism. I think y'all did a great job. First of all, I want the public to know that our entire school board and my cabinet team went through mental health first aid training, and I appreciate you putting that time aside, being leaders in the state, so we can really understand the breadth and depth of this work that we have ahead of us. As all of you know, because you've participated in one or two of the nine student forums, some common denominators came out from our students. I would like to share those now, and it's absolutely in conjunction with what we're hearing from the students. Some things that students want to make sure that get addressed and we understand over time are some of the issues related to depression, bipolar disorder, even eating disorders came up at three schools, anxiety, suicide, panic attacks, and the effect that traumatic events have on youth. And really looking at ways to, they know we have some things in place, but how are we going to teach the general student population reporting mechanisms, whether they're self-reporting or have a concern about somebody else? And that's what this work, to me, is all about. Understanding, you know, so adults understand and students understand the differentiation between a bad day and a potential mental health issue. And as we spoke about with the students, all we would be doing is asking a professional to screen. It doesn't mean that we're all mental health specialists, but we do have, thank you, Board, 13 new mental health counselors, and that's, those people are there now to start helping us. And we know we need more. We know that there's more work to do. I think the biggest thing that came out of the student forums is, let's figure out a way to remove the stigma related to mental health. It's almost like mental health is a word that shouldn't be talked about. And the students really believe the more we talk about it, the more we understand it as a group, the bigger help that we can be to each other. Board members, you know, last week, our students were selected at the State Safety and Mental Health Conference, and we actually did a live student forum in front of superintendents and captains, lieutenants, and sheriffs, a large crowd, and they did a phenomenal job. And I'll tell you what came out of that. I'll be speaking in Tallahassee, I think, on the 14th. What came out of that is, we spend a lot of time talking about hardening campuses, but students want to talk about softening campuses. And mental health training, relationships, all of that comes under the softening piece. So when Malavika and I, and we spoke yesterday, I think the piece that Dr. Walsh recommended is probably the right direction for a resolution. We have to adopt every year now, as you know, a mental health framework. And why not incorporate student voice in our framework? And we spoke about a few different mechanisms to do that. And then maybe the student resolution being one of the lead pages in our mental health framework each year.
So we can't thank you enough for your time and your leadership on such a very important topic.
Thank you so much for giving me this platform.
Our pleasure. Next up, Sandra Maldonado-Ross, and then Debbie Smith, please. Good evening.
Good evening. And I come to you guys, first of all, to thank the young people for standing up and saying what they've said, because I, as a teacher, am very proud of the students and their accomplishments and standing up for their rights. So, thank you. Another thing that I'd like to do, and the main reason I'm here for you guys tonight, is to invite you to a rally for public education. On March 4, this coming Monday, in two major intersections in Seminole County, at the intersection of 436 and 434, as well as at the intersection of Reinhardt Road and Lake Mary Boulevard, we will be promoting public education by waving signs and rallying in support of public education to get the legislators' eyes out there to know that we are still out and proud of public education, and they need to remember us when it comes to this legislative session. So we'd invite you to come. It's going to be from 5:30 to 7:00. And we are asking anybody who comes, we're red. We'll have a bunch of signs that we have. We're creating signs at our representative assembly this Thursday, so if you don't have a sign, come out anyway. We'll have a sign for you. But come out and support public education in front of everybody. There are going to be 61 out of the 67 counties doing something similar to what we're doing on that same day. So it would be good for us to have a good showing in Seminole County as a part of that big resolution to promote public education in the legislative session. So please, come out and join us. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Debbie Smith, and then Dawn, please.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Before I started my comments, I did want to say I'm wearing Trayvon Martin's shirt that I bought when I attended his, I don't know what you would call it in Sanford, but a remembrance after the tragedy where he was taken by gun violence one year ago, I mean, seven years ago today in this county. Seven years. And the reason why I never forget is, my son was 17, the same age as Trayvon Martin. He was a senior at Lake Hell High School. So he was not black. And so when I said to my son, "Be careful, don't wear a hoodie," he said, "Are you kidding me? I'm white." He knew that there was a difference between white and black in our community. So I just wanted to wear this shirt in his memory. This is an open letter to the school board and the superintendent.
My name is Debbie Smith. I attended the February 5, 2019, School Board meeting and provided a public comment on SB 7030 and the changes being made to the Guardian program. In my comments, I requested that the Board and Superintendent make a public written statement assuring the community that Seminole County Public Schools will not arm teachers. I know that Seminole County Public Schools began a safe school program a few years ago, which included trained school resource officers in each school. This was a proactive measure which needs to be applauded. Unfortunately, lawmakers feel that is not enough to have tactically trained deputies keeping schools safe. They want to make it possible for teachers and other personnel to carry weapons. There is no research or evidence to support arming teachers as a way of making schools safe. You can understand how concerning this is to our community. When we hear of previously passed bills being changed in this manner, we look to our local school board leaders to be the voice of reason when it comes to safety for our children while at school. I understand that is the goal of the Seminole County School Board, to seek flexibility in the funds provided by the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act. It makes sense that Seminole County should be able to offset current costs associated with resource officers or apply those same funds to hiring more counselors or social workers or making the schools safer. I will be meeting with Senator David Simmons and my Representative Joy Goff-Marcel this week to discuss the bill that has been submitted by Senator Cruz, Senate Bill 712. This bill would allow safe school allocation funds previously allocated exclusively for school source resource officers to be distributed among all school districts regardless of whether the school district chooses to participate in the Guardian program. The districts would have the flexibility to use these funds for other safety measures, such as such as increased counselors and social workers to consider the mental health of our students. This bill needs to make it out of the Education Appropriations Committee and be moved to the floor for a vote. I encourage everyone to call your representatives and tell them to support Senate Bill 712. If it's possible, I would like to poll the board to see if they agree with arming teachers and support staff. Is that possible?
Thank you for your public comment.
If I might respond, no, it's not pursuant to your board policies regarding the running of your meeting.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Dawn Baloo?
My name is Dawn Baloo. I'm a Winter Springs resident. I am a parent of two SCPS students and a former public school teacher. Today, I'm here to discuss the ongoing issue of school safety and security and specifically the recent push to arm teachers. As I expect you're aware, the Marjory Stoneman Commission, an appointed committee with no authority to dictate policy or law, recently recommended expanding the Guardian program to allow arming teachers. And the Senate Education Committee, including Seminole's own David Simmons, voted to advance SB 7030, which would allow arming teachers and require sheriffs to create a program if school boards approve it. I know that this board and Dr. Griffin have stated publicly your commitment to the SRR program and your opposition to arming teachers. In fact, in meetings with legislators in Tallahassee last month, I offered Seminole County Schools and its effective partnership with the Sheriff's Office as a model for the state. It should be. I thank you for your forward-thinking leadership on this issue and urge you to recommit to these policies. Please resist these outside pressures to advance the dangerous policy of arming teachers. Data shows that the presence of a gun increases risk to children and there is significant doubt an armed teacher could stop an active shooter. Also, the presence of armed civilians complicates law enforcement response to active shooter situations. I respectfully submit fact sheets with citations, which are publicly available at EveryTown.org. For these reasons, the Florida Association, Education Association, the Florida PTA, the Florida Association of SROs, numerous school districts, and sheriffs oppose arming teachers. As we approach the SCPS Mental Health Summit later this week, I ask you to please keep in mind the role of gun suicide. When a gun is used in a suicide attempt, it is fatal 85% of the time, while other manner of attempts are survivable over 90% of the time. In over 80% of youth gun suicides, the child used a gun belonging to a family member. We must encourage responsible gun ownership and storage in our prevention work. For example, we have a hunting rifle in my home, stored unlocked, secured with a trigger lock, separate from ammunition. We can prevent school-based gun violence with safe storage. In summary, arming teachers is a dangerous proposal against which we must stand firm. Local families are counting on you to continue best practices for school safety through the SRO program, through mental health, and through other prevention initiatives. I'd like to really thank March for Our Lives for being here and showing their leadership. They are not tomorrow's leaders, they are today's leaders. And I encourage you to take on their resolution. And Ms. Smith, I too feel personally convicted by the Trayvon Martin shooting. And when I speak to these issues, I carry his memory with me.
Thank you so much for your comments. Dr. Griffin, do you have any unfinished or new business, please?
Madam Chair, I do not, but there is an issue, I would like to engage the board in some discussions so I can bring a recommendation to the next meeting. The Florida School Board Association is inquiring if we would like a seat on their board of directors. And I think because at this time, we have three of our five board members as active members of FSBA, we are eligible. So, I'd like to just get some feedback and bring a recommendation to the next meeting.
Comments or input, board members?
Well, if I could speak to that, it's, their membership, I think, is a little pricey. Just, I'm just being very candid. And I think that the three of us can bring the information back to you all. So, that would be my suggestion. Save the dollars and we'll bring you the information.
Thank you. Ms. Pennick?
The board seat term that they're offering, is it one year, two years?
It's a two-year term.
I agree. I think my first year, I've gotten some valuable information, but not sure how effective a second-year membership would be and how that would affect our ability to sit on the board. And also, would like us, I think our focus needs to be a little bit more local.
Ms. Simon, any?
Well, we've both served on the board of directors for FSBA and it is worthwhile when you're doing it, it's very time-consuming. There is zero downtime when you're up there and as a new school board member, you need that downtime to meet others, other peers across the state and maybe speak with some of the presenters that are at the conferences.
And just for myself, while the organization does serve a purpose for some, I think we have a lot of individual issues here in Seminole County. And as was highlighted this evening by some of our speakers, sometimes we do things differently because we want to do what's right all the time for our students and teachers. And I think we have been more successful in our individual pleas and our individual goals here locally. And that's my personal preference, is I care about Seminole County and that's where I think we have to spend our time. So, is that enough feedback for you to get a consensus?
Yes, it is. It is, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else in your superintendent's report?
They are all read-only items. I just want to make a quick comment about the proposed summer high school schedule. We put that in without middle and elementary, just because we're starting the registration process. Board members, you're just aware of the dates in case you hear anything. And we'll bring elementary, middle at a later date.
Great, thank you. And now, moving on to board member comments. Member Kraus?
Thank you. Well, first, I wish Abby well. She had back surgery today, so we're hoping that she's resting and not in too much pain. It's been a busy couple of weeks. I met with our superintendent and personally, we've requested a work session on school safety, mental health, and so forth, and that will come after the legislative session in June. So, watch for the dates, those of you that are interested. We had plenty of school visits, Lot, I presented both Lotton Elementary and Stentstrom Elementary, their Arts Alive checks, they were thrilled, the kids were delightful. I attended the, it's called Shaq School Health Advisory Council and made some good partnerships there, learning about some preventive opportunities they have. There's a feature that I knew nothing about, to dial 211 if someone, if a student is in crisis and they will dispatch immediately within the hour to help families. I didn't know about that service. We did the finance training with Florida School Board Association, and this is right up Amy's alley, I think, but I learned how we get funding per student and that was very valuable. They made us do the calculations and that was awesome. I was able to tour Seminole Virtual School and I learned so much about the programs that we're offering and we are very unique and have great opportunities for expanding some of those programs. I attended Tuscaloosa Middle School, their incoming sixth grade student night, and they had the orchestra and they had the cheerleaders and they had chorus and dancing. It was awesome. The other thing I'd like to mention, we went to the Winter Springs High School Culinary, the Ankers Away Gala, I can never say that right. They are fantastic. I would hire them for an event any day, anytime. And finally, the last, I was invited by Dr. Lawrence to tour Seminole State College and they are working fabulously in our community. We have a great partnership and you're on the board, so you know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Almond?
And thank you. Amber DeMorse and Families in Need and I were invited out to Tuscaloosa Shepherds. It's a nonprofit from Tuscaloosa Methodist Church and they have a constant food pantry that for about nine, well, they do nine of our schools full-time for years and years and years, like 30 years, they've been doing the community, but then they want to really focus on our schools. So, we thank them for their partnership. Seminole County Regional Chamber of Commerce had the new Department of Education head, Mr. Cochran, and it was good to hear him speak locally. I see you checking off what we're saying. Okay. The Brain Bowl, where the kids come into the room from the different high schools and they answer questions before they're even out of the speaker's mouth. It's amazing what these kids know and I know they'll be very successful in their future. We all went to Science Fair Awards. There was an AP Art Show at the Caspery Art House for underclassmen. It was very well-attended and they always did music and food trucks at the same time. Insurance and Wellness Committee, they talked about 2,248 flu shots that employees took advantage of. They said that number did not include if you went into Publix or Walmart or CVS and had a free shot there. There were two other opportunities that Signa mentioned, I Prevail, to deal with everyday challenges and stress, and Happify, which is dealing with your emotional health. Children's Cabinet talked about April being Child Abuse Prevention Month, and there'll be more about that, you'll see pinwheels coming out. And I think I'll do the last one, I'll do is for the Walt Walk on, this past Saturday, we were all there. It was fantastic. I appreciate, Dr. Griffin, that you and the wellness team feel how important this is for all of our employees. And you encourage their families to come out, so thank you.
They said we had about 2,000 there, I mean...
Oh, it was amazing.
I'll leave other things for you and Amy.
Did it rain?
No, it didn't rain. It didn't rain.
That's because we had 2,000 ponchos, just in case. If we hadn't had purchased them, it would have rained, so we got to return them through Amazon. Mrs. Pennick?
Gosh, you guys have covered most of it, but I just want to say kudos to the, our partnership with Grow, who kind of wrapped up all of their cross-country runs for all of our kiddos. Did a fabulous job getting our kids out there, the families out there, the involvement from the teachers in the schools to teach these kids that running is a good education or good pathway in your life. You could see them out there just running and having fun and pushing themselves and the parents cheering them on and the other kids cheering them on. It's just, it's amazing. So, I also had the great fortune of touring some of our really fabulous ESE pre-K classrooms, which just, we have some amazing teachers that are working with these kiddos. And the audiology department, which is fascinating, we are working with these kids who don't have resources out in the community to get hearing tests and maybe even get the hearing aids to help them. They got to show me some of the pins that these kids can use to help magnify the hearing abilities, which was pretty phenomenal. The state of the county, which was really nice and informative about what's going on in our community. More importantly, thank you Chairman Calderon for your leading and going to the news about the issues that we're having in school with the vaping. I think that our parents need to be more educated on what it looks like, what the jewels look like, what the ramifications are. And so, thank you for leading that. And then, I do want to probably go off a little bit and with the recent concerns that have happened or that are in the news about funding and how funding is spent, I wondered if it would be appropriate if I asked our CFO to come up and maybe give us a brief conversation about the checks and balances that we have in place to make sure our money is being spent in the right buckets and we don't end up in the news or in a similar predicament. So, not to put you on the spot, Bill, but...
I saw him running at the Walt Walk, you know?
Well, I was trying to get him not to run, which is why he's probably hobbling now.
And by the rest, by the end of the day, I was convinced I should not have ran. I'm going to focus on the restrictions on capital funding because I think that's really the main issue we're talking about. There are three things that finance concerns itself with to ensure are in place for the safety of, frankly, our finances. The first is compliance with laws and regulations. The second is, is there operational validity? By that, I mean, is facilities knowledgeable about this, do they support this project? You'll see how that ties in in a minute. And third, proper accounting. The last one, you think, doesn't really apply based on the things we've been reading about, but actually, the distinction between capital and operating expenditures is really, can be, is difficult, can be gray, it's situational. It requires a lot of thought sometimes and that can impact accounting. And I view it as my responsibility to you and to the public that we have a proper accounting of all our funds and we make that good decision about whether it's a capital asset or an operating expenditure. So, for large projects, the ones we've been reading about, our primary control is organizational structure and it really starts with all of you and Dr. Griffin. This board is so unusual, this approach that Dr. Griffin has with you is unusual. Each of you talk with myself, Mr. Nolte, and Dr. Griffin before every single board meeting individually. And we go through all the things that are on our mind, all the big projects we have in place, all the things we're thinking about, plus the things that we're bringing to the board meeting. So, you know where we are all the time and you're able to tell us, give us feedback on how we're doing things. I think some of what we've been reading about are people that are operating in silos. We don't do that. Each year, as we plan our budget and Joe and his team develop that five-year capital plan, there's conversation back and forth between his team and my team, me and Joe. And what we're doing is we're collaborating on, does this make sense? Does it make sense to use this funding source for this project? Is this really something that we should be doing? Nobody can run over another person. Nobody has the authority on their own to make a decision like this. We talk it through. That's the environment of this organization. So, from my perspective, for the, for the large projects, the ones we've been reading about, those things, that operational environment is really the key to our success and why I don't think we have much of a risk there, we have good controls in place. We have a bigger issue on the smaller projects. And that, primarily, those are projects by schools and call centers, mostly schools. And it's just a lack of understanding. So, a few years ago, we made some changes in our processes, which weren't intended to capture just this issue, but other issues. And one of them is not a change in process, one I want to talk about, is this whole collaboration thing again. Our bookkeepers feel comfortable calling our accounting department, asking them for help on things like cost trips. That seems like a little thing, but you know how wonderful it is for a bookkeeper to be able to call and talk something over with our accountant and get some feedback before they do something. It helps us solve problems before they even exist. The second hard control, and from an audit perspective, more important control, is that our process now requires, when the purchase order is submitted, prepared by a bookkeeper, it doesn't go to her boss first, it goes to our accounting staff first. The issues when we look at purchase orders on capital are really complex because we do have the compliance issue I talked about earlier. We do have that operational issue. Then we have this whole complex series of questions we have to answer about, are we really counting for this in the right place? Is this really a proper use of these funds? And if it is a proper use of these funds, where should we be coding it? So, what happens is these purchase orders come into our accounting department. Purchase orders that are $1,000 or more are approved by accountants. Purchase orders for capital projects, no matter the amount of the dollar size, it can be $1, we don't see any of those fortunately, but it can be a very small dollar amount. Those are approved by one accountant and one accountant only. So, every single one of those purchase orders is reviewed by this one accountant. The reason we only use one accountant is we need a subject matter expert on this. This is not something we can just throw to the other accountants and say, just, you should know this along with better on all the other things you do. We need somebody who focuses only on capital. So, we have somebody that does that. So, as she's reviewing the purchase order, she's not only looking at, is the funding, does the funding source make sense for the spending? She's also looking at, does this project even feel right? Is there a funny feel to this? This is something we should be doing. When she has any concerns at all about this, she calls facilities. Facilities will, somebody from facilities will contact the project manager, review the idea with them. They will get back with her, let her know if this is something they support. In other words, generally, you won't find some facilities too happy about supporting moving walls or adding walls that they didn't know about. So, those are the kind of things that we do to make sure the right hand and the left hand know what they're doing. And we don't have some of those embarrassing things that happen sometimes where facilities goes into a school and, like happened in my old district, where does this building come from? We don't have this. We don't have those kind of things happening in Seminole. So, actually, now that I think about it, I believe that covered everything. So I think I'll stop there, not babble. Are there any questions you might have?
I have one question. You have one accountant reviewing all of these, what happens if that person doesn't make it to work? What's your backup plan?
Well, Carrie Chambers, as you met, our new finance director, she has developed this wonderful process for evaluating everything everybody does, and it's collaborative, just as I described, the way we work at our level collaboratively. So what she has done with this accountant is she has spent a lot of time training her and helping her develop a way to approach making these decisions in capital, and in the process, has trained herself.
Okay.
So what we have is a situation where she is so deeply ingrained and knowledgeable about the steps and the processes involved, she would have no problem stepping in. Now, that's a good, short-to-medium-term solution, so that would work on a day or, if somebody's gone for a day or two. If someone has been gone for a longer period of time, we would have to hire somebody else and train them, and it could be challenging.
Just to confirm for you guys, Carrie, who he mentioned, is also a certified fraud examiner. So it gives a little bit more assurance to me that she's able to recognize red flags.
She worked with Deloitte too, but I'll tell you, the one that impressed me the most is the Financial Accounting Standards Board. She worked in the international arena, and boy, she brings a wealth of knowledge and skills to this district.
That address your concerns. I know you come from the financial background, and I'm glad you brought it up, quite frankly, because we all spend a lot of time going through the finances at every single board meeting, and we all sit on many boards, and I've never been with such a transparent organization. And as you highlighted tonight, a flat organization. So we always have all hands on deck, and because of the great relationships that we built in the district, I think that's why we continue to get awards every single year on our clean audits and being nationally known for that. So thank you and your team for keeping us off of the front page of the newspaper that you were alluding to.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, and I'll pass it on to them.
Ms. Pennick and board members, I want to add, the culture of my team, of the cabinet, is one that when I misstep, they correct me. This is a big district, and I have experts in all areas, and that's their role. I don't need yes-men or women, I need people who keep things right. I'm looking at one right now. But it's important that, I think, a team always feels comfortable to correct each other and help each other and work together.
Anything else? Okay. There's a few things left for me. I was really impressed visiting Idowild Elementary with some of our executives. They had their Future Ready Magnet Night for the first time ever, and it was exciting to see community members come out and embrace the new magnet schools that we have. Since Ms. Sanchez isn't here, and she represents us on the Seminole Cultural Arts Council, I thought I'd share. I attended the Heart for the Arts Gala, their big fundraiser for the year, and it was wonderful seeing different kinds of artwork demonstrated, and knowing that there's a career path for our students who love the arts, there's other things for them to do in the future. I also attended the Central Florida Public School Boards Coalition, and the agenda items this month were diverse. The first part was based on insurance. We actually had Andrea Herr come and speak. There's many new school board members on the coalition that haven't been as well-trained as we all have in insurance and decisions on self-funding and those kind of things. So she gave a phenomenal presentation, and I think we emailed her PowerPoints out to every one of you. In addition to that, we voted to support Captain Francis's plea to get rid of some of these fire drills that we're having by state statute in all of our schools, because it's not the best use of our time. As far as the Orlando Science Center Board I sit on, they are in their final rounds of hopefully getting millions of dollars from their TDC in Orange County. And the other thing that they're working on for their legislative priority is to go to the state to ask for funding for a mobile classroom. So even though it would be from the Orlando Science Center, it would be our students and teachers that could partake from that. So that's nice to know, that they're understanding that not everybody can get to the Science Center, so they're trying to bring the Science Center out to the underserved communities, and we know exactly where we'd like to send them. And the Central Florida Zoo Board I sit on, and they mainly spent their time working on hosting field trips. I don't think there's been a school we've been in that we haven't seen a bus there. We ask, where are you going? The zoo. So that's exciting, that they have such a great partnership with our school district, but they're also open for business during spring break. So if anybody has children that they need to have childcare for, the zoo is a great opportunity for them. One event we all went to was the Spelling Bee, and congratulations to our representative for Heathrow Elementary was the winner, and Sanford Middle School came in second. So that was exciting, seeing an elementary student win. I also represented at Go Red for Women, the American Heart Association, their annual fundraiser, and it was great to see how many of their messages that they share are the same things that I know Mrs. Almond will be sharing from our Health and Wellness Committee, and we share with all of our teammates, because we know, especially for females, the strokes and the heart attacks go unnoticed a lot of times, because our symptoms can be a little bit different. This month, in the Mayor's and Managers Meeting, the mayor of Longwood is actually chair of this organization, and rather than having agendas every month, it was decided that it's just going to be an open forum. So I ask you, as board members, if there's any questions that you would like me to bring to the cities and county, or any type of topics of discussion that you'd like us all to collaboratively work on, just let Dr. Griffin or myself know, and we can bring it. Right now, it's talking about issues that really aren't school board-related, but we're hopeful to get our committee back, with our Public School Finance Committee back. We're waiting on some more members so we can get our bylaws cleaned up. I know, Mrs. Almond, you worked on that for years, but I think we're at a good point now, and we can resolve that shortly. Congratulations to Maureen Dobbins and her team for the blackout bullying presentations. That was a wonderful celebration. I had the opportunity to attend many Black History Month celebrations, but probably my favorite was Millennium Middle School. Anytime you walk into that auditorium, you're just in awe, so it just elevates any kind of session you attend. And the Health Department has started a new garden. And the reason that was so exciting to me was, they invited our Goldsboro Elementary students over to have the students teach the adults how to plant the garden. As you know, they have a food pantry that's opened on Thursday evenings for our community in need, and they felt that some of these families didn't need just the dry goods and staples, they wanted them to have fresh fruits and vegetables. So they're going to be growing them right there at the Health Department, thanks to our little Goldsboro students that were there planting the seeds, so that was exciting. Also had the opportunity to attend the Urban League Annual Gala, actually, it was a breakfast, and had the opportunity to sit with Governor DeSantis. And when he spoke to the group, I was really encouraged that many of his visions are aligned with exactly what we feel for public education. So I'm hopeful, and we're going to stay zero-focused on doing what's right for kids in public education this year. Thank you to Seminole State College for hosting our young men and women of excellence. They had them over on campus on Friday for the Hidden Figures Movie, to try to encourage especially female, minority females, to go into the sciences. And they had some of their professors, female in the sciences, talk to them and let them know that that's a great opportunity for a future workforce for them. And All County Elementary Music Festival, we all went to. Congratulations to our teachers and students. You would never, if somebody had walked in there, you would never have guessed it was elementary school students. It was phenomenal. And congratulations to Lake Mary High School Boys, soccer state champs. That was wonderful. We all attended the Seminole State College Dream Gala, and 100% of those funds go to student scholarships, so a lot of our students will be partaking from the generosity of that foundation. And Dr. Griffin, thank you for representing us all Sunday. Crosslife, the Secure Our Vito Schools made a donation of $77,000. That shows the community really does care about safety within our schools. And I think I'll stop at that, except to invite you all Saturday and Sunday to come out to the Lake Mary Heathrow Arts Festival. Our students will have artwork displayed there, it's always wonderful. And don't forget, Community, 6:00 PM, Lyman High School, Thursday evening, our Mental Health and School Safety Summit. We look forward to hosting you all there. There's free childcare available, if that's a concern for any families. But Dr. Griffin, do you have anything further?
Covered.
Nope. All set. With no further business that's come before the board, this meeting stands adjourned.